Everybody, thank you for coming. It's May 24th, 2023. Time is 5:32. We'll bring this meeting to order. Let's have a roll call. I'm Jacob Gray, District 3 in the North Fork area.
Robbie LaMalle, Delta County.
Cora Holm, Planning Director.
I'm Kate, District 3.
Steve Schrock, District Glendale.
David Merrick, District 3.
Todd Queen, District 1.
Arty, District 2, Service Creek.
Landholdings, District 2, Service Creek.
Cindy Watson, District 1.
Brittany Hating, Planning Technician.
Kate Darlington, District 3.
Thank you.
We have, if I may, so we have two members from District 2 that are not here. Commissioner Turner, Commissioner Locke, so Commissioner Veron is able to vote. District 3, we have all the voting members, so Commissioner Merrick is, he can participate in the discussion but will not vote.
Thank you. We're gonna get to a couple of housekeeping. Do we have anyone online?
No.
Good. That helps. A couple of housekeeping tips. If you have any phones on, would you please silence those at this time? Keep interruptions down. I have a note about Zoom participation. We don't have that. For folks in the public and for those of us at the table, we do have a public hearing tonight. The process for that is we're gonna have a presentation from staff or questions for staff from the Planning Commission. We'll have the applicant present, present if they have any further information they want to add. We'll have questions of the applicant, then we'll invite the public comment. If you want to speak, I'd like to pass this around one more time. Please indicate name, address. If you'd fill that out, and then we'll have you come up to the table and repeat your name and address just for the record. You have three minutes to speak. If you are speaking in favor or against the project, please direct all comments or questions at the Planning Commission. And then we will relay those to the applicant and, you know, try to, try to not have too much back and forth going on. After that, we will have a final round of questions from the Planning Commission. We'll close the public comment and we'll deliberate at the table. After that, we'll take a five-minute break. And then we're gonna go into some business for the Planning Commission where we're gonna address our bylaws. With that, we'll move on to, I went over the agenda. Are there any other changes to the agenda?
No.
Great. Meeting minutes? Great. Meeting minutes. We have a consideration of the meeting minutes from May 10th, 2023. Recommendation to approve the meeting minutes. Motion is there second?
Seconded.
Is there any discussion about the minutes? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Minutes have been approved. This moves us to the public hearing of PLN 23036. Consideration of a rezone of 30.91 acre parcel.
Oh. Mr. Commissioner, I'd like to just disclose, I know the neighbors, gentleman who wrote a letter, Mr. Era. I don't feel like I have a conflict of interest. He had communicated on other items. He's never raised this up. He's never even brought it up. I didn't know he had even written a letter until I read the letter. So I just wanted to disclose that I, I know the guy. I don't, I don't feel it's a conflict of interest and I'm not gonna remove myself. I just wanna make sure I made disclosure to everybody. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Members of the Commission. This item for you tonight is PLN 22036. It's a request to rezone about 31 acres from A20 to A5. It's located between 2525 Road and Pine Ridge Road and Cedar Edge. So, a little bit of background, as I mentioned, it's about 31 acres. It's currently zoned A20. It's just south of the Pine Ridge North subdivision, which was MJ 07008. Created three lots in three phases. The final phase is finishing construction at this point. Averages about two, two and a half acres per lot. And includes Pine Ridge Road as the main road. There's other cul-de-sacs which are private roads. So on the left here is the concept plan that was submitted back in 2008. You can see the three phases highlighted, the Pine Ridge North subdivision. You can also see how the road runs to the south boundary line and actually extends to the parcel to the south, which was also owned by, by the Coues, who did the subdivision. On the left side, not highlighted, you kind of see that triangular piece, is an open space lot that was created. And then the sketch plan actually shows extending that open space to the south. To the right is the final plat for Phase 3 that was just accepted in 2021. As I mentioned, is, is under construction at this point. Excellent. So I gave that context so that now, as you see, kind of what's on the ground on the right in the vicinity map, with the subject parcel outlined in red, 2525 Road is kind of to the bottom right. It makes a 90-degree turn basically at that, that southeast corner. And then you see the zoning map on the left. Above it, the Pine Ridge North subdivision was zoned A5 as well as properties east of that. The subject property and properties east and south of that were zoned A20. And then there's a large parcel, land holdings to the west, zoned A35. That's that dark green color there. Excellent. So for rezoning, there's, there's three findings for the commission to consider. That the rezon will not reduce the protection of natural resources or expose people or property to hazards. The closed zoning is consistent with the master plan. There are adequate public facilities available. And then you have to make one of three determinations. And there's three alternatives. I've highlighted alternative 2. And that's the reason I showed you the Pine Ridge North subdivision is the change of character capacity of public facilities and allows for reasonable compatible with existing and planned contexts. And so since there had been a sketch plan, there was the development. That's why staff felt that alternative 2 could be for consideration as the determination to support the rezoning. There's also all other alternatives if you feel that that better fits this. If you feel that you want to rezone the property, that implements an adopted county plan, could be the master plan. Alternative 3, that there is a greater need and priorities balanced in line. You said in other words, the need for the house, for this type of housing, this type of development within the county. Next slide. So with the proposed rezoning in the staff report, it identifies that they would take access through the Pine Ridge North subdivision coming to the south under the current land use code. And so this is, this is being developed under the 2021 land use code. When you have eight or more lots, it requires a second access. When Pine Ridge North was developed, it did not require that. It was prior to the land use code. So in staff's opinion, adding a couple lots here would dictate the need to extend that road down to 2025 Road so that there are two access points, one at the north, one at the south. Next slide. Try again. There. So with that, for your consideration is whether or not it meets the findings for a rezoning. Staff feels that it can, if that's what you would like to recommend to the Board of County Commissioners. And then in that case, to approve the rezoning from A20 to A5. With that, I'll stop there and take any questions from the commissioners.
Any questions of staff at this time from the Planning Commission?
Yeah, I have a question. Could you go back to the Pine Ridge subdivision plan? There you go. So, can you just go up there and point out what, what property is being asked to be rezoned at this time?
It's just the left-hand side. Okay. It's this part down here. It was not part of Pine Ridge nor subdivision. That, that came, that comes to here. As you see, the road ends here. There was actually a hammerhead, you know, here at the end was done temporarily, but as you can see, there was a thought to actually extend that road further south.
Okay, so it's not part of that.
It's not part of that.
And on the right-hand side is just the same thing that's on the left-hand side.
That's. Yeah, you have, you have the sketch that was submitted in 2008. You have the final plat for Phase 3 on the right.
I see.
Yeah. I will note that the, the application does talk about with the zoning change, the property would be split into two parcels of approximately 15 acres each. With a rezoning to A5, it has the potential to be subdivided into six lots with the 30-plus acres.
So a few more questions. In our current zoning map, do we not have properties that are 15 acres in the A20s?
Yes. In fact, you have some just to the east of this.
So, I guess, you know, questioning, why do we need to rezone it to A5 if they're doing two 15-acre lots? Why aren't we just leaving it A20?
In order to do 15-acre lots, we'd require two variances.
What are the variances?
Variances are for reducing the minimum lot size. And so basically, it's creating an exception. The question is, do you want, from a staff perspective, a rezoning is a better approach to, if you wanna have lots under the current land use code rather than variances?
I guess I'm not understanding the variance. You said variance is reducing the lot size below the A20, but we don't have a requirement in the 2021 code that, that the lots be 20 acres?
That, that was. Yes, we do. Actually, actually, in, in, in Chapter 3, Table 3A, for an A20, it requires a minimum of 20 acres. If you cannot, for the sub, if you are in A20, each parcel has to be 20 acres. If you cannot meet that 20 acres, that minimum, then you can apply for variance through the Board of Adjustment. This, in this case, would be two variances because both lots would not meet that minimum.
I see. So, they couldn't do it a 20 and a 10?
They could do a 20 and a 10.
And still say.
That would be one variance. Yes.
That'd be one variance because then you'd have the one, the one 10 acre that doesn't meet the 20 acre compliance. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
And then in our, in what we had the discussion about the revised land use code that we did to adopt, that would have been, they only needed one, so we, we don't have that reusing 2020. Okay, I understand the variances now. Okay.
Any other questions?
You done? I'm done yet, I'm sorry.
So, what, what we have is a verbal proposal to do two 15-acre lots.
I wouldn't call it a verbal proposal. It's written in the application, but we do not have a clap. We do not have an application for the subdivision. They wanted to make sure they could get the rezon before they applied for that subdivision.
So we would have some assurances then that it would not come back as six 5-acre?
There's no assurance. Well, A5, they could, they could subdivide it into five-acre lots. Now, at that point, if it's three or more lots, it's a preliminary plat that would come to the Planning Commission.
Right.
Rather than, rather than going industry.
Correct.
Okay. I thought I saw other parcels to the east of this. I'm not sure that I saw.
Can you go to the aerial?
Previous slide. On land ownership that did Mr. Coues.
Coues.
Coues. Is there still ownership of property that he has from the east side of the subdivision area?
Kind of probably to the southeast, just south of 2025 Road.
Right here. Way down there. Not touching. But no plans of doing anything with that in relationship to this property?
And there's nothing at this point.
Okay. Well, if it went subdivision, we'd have to do water and all those kinds of things. So that's, we're not doing that now.
Correct.
I guess I'll skip here. For more, at least. Questions?
Yeah.
David, I get to speak? Does staff have any input on the need for additional housing in the county?
Oh. The housing studies show.
Yeah, I mean, the housing study obviously shows there's a significant need, especially for the attainable housing.
That's a good question.
Which natural resources were considered in determining that this would not reduce the level of protection of those natural resources? Basically, irrigated lands. They're not irrigate, none of the lands on this parcel are irrigated. Other than that, if it were two 15-acre lots, it wouldn't affect it, you know, from a wildlife perspective.
Right.
What is the use of the property right now? Do you know?
It needs.
It's not ag, grazing.
Not, not that I'm aware of. Not when I've gone up and looked at it.
It's not being irrigated at the present time. Is there any, any access for irrigating water or you have no water at all?
Well, the nearest I know, I'm, I'm the real estate agent that represents the guy that's applied for this. The nearest I understand, Mr. Coues would know better. To get water, it's a long ways off to even try and get it there. And it's pretty impractical, you know? And as, as you mentioned, if you do A5 zoning, then you're allowed to do whatever is under A5 zoning. But he has no, this Mr. Simone Roth has no desire to try and cut this thing up. And he, his plan originally, we were gonna just go for the variance. I talked with him about it, but there wasn't a Board of Adjustment. They didn't have anybody. And the lady up front, she was going, man, here's your options. And so when we talked about it, we said, then let's do the A5 zoning. It's a lot cleaner. You know, just, then you just do it, just being a good neighbor. But he's willing to put something even in writing, as long as it be two parcels. I mean, there's no desire to do that. In fact, Mr. Coues was willing to go out there and really walk the property with us. And from 2525 Road on the south, we have been up there and walking and saw all these stakes. And we said, man, it looks like there was gonna be a cul-de-sac here. And that wasn't, Mr. Coues is thinking down the road, he may have done a development in there and then chose not to. And then Mr. Simone, who's the one that is attempting to purchase the property for Mr. Coues, and so they jointly applied for this. His desire was just to have the two lots. One will access from Pine Ridge Road and one will access from 2525 Road. And along 2525 Road, you got a huge access and a road that's actually in there already. And, and that's, that's really the plan. That's all there is to it. It's, it's real simple.
We need a name. The gentleman.
Who are you, sir?
What's that? Well, my name is Nick Strazza.
Your address?
I think he's on the list.
Are you on the, you're on the? Did we get that list passed around?
Yeah, I have my email address. Do you have my physical address or just email?
Yeah, would you state your physical address for us?
The, the email or physical?
State your physical address, please.
Well, state it.
Yep.
1385 Southeast 3rd Street in Cedar Edge.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for staff, Cindy?
I, did you have any question? No, I'm done. So it appears that the intent is to divide it up into these two 15-acre lots, but nothing says that they could divide it into potentially six acres, acre lots, or six lots, correct?
That's correct.
Water doesn't seem to be an issue, so it's not.
Well, they have the water and everything.
So we're not worried about irrigated land. We're not worried about water distribution or irrigation plan is what I've read. We're not worried about that, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that was my other question. Thank you.
I had a question about the, the mention of the kind of conservation area or, or open space land. Was there conversation about intentions of keeping that in the plan or like where, where does that stand on any, any of this? It's kind of been abandoned?
At this point, that, yeah, that doesn't, that's not on the table.
Um, and then if this, if we approve this and then they, the applicant comes to split it into two 15-acre lots, that's an administrative process. Within that administrative process, does staff have the ability to put conditions or plat notes on, you know, those two 15 acres can't be further subdivided or anything like that? Or we're just totally opening up like kind of any conditions that can be put on in the future with the understanding that this was the intention from the outset?
Um, staff does have the administrative ability to condition the minor plat. It's a discretionary action. Need to have a nexus.
Yeah.
You know, for putting a condition like no further development. Of course, the applicant can volunteer that and make a plat note to that effect.
Okay.
Just follow up on that, Kate. The final plat for the original upper Phase 3 includes the open space.
But that's on a different property.
It's correct.
There, there was some conversation about the indicated, the, the south lot that we're looking at now also has kind of a corner cut out that maybe would be open space in the future. But obviously, it's a different owner looking at this property. It's not in conversation at this point.
Correct.
I think that's.
Oh, great.
The original property, does it have legal access and where is it at?
The.
To come through the.
When you're talking about the original property, the Pine Ridge North comes in off of Cedar Mason.
So this property here is, its access is coming through that subdivision?
Yeah, the, the road through, through Pine Ridge North goes all the way to the south property line would allow access. It is a private road, so I would have to defer to Mr. Coues how that's set up, but it basically provides access to the lot right now.
And then the lot, the applicant have to.
We have an easement from, through Pine Ridge North to this property. It's south of Pine Ridge North.
Okay. So it was included.
Are we ready for the applicant to come up? If the applicant or those representing the applicants could come step forward and kind of address us, answer any of the questions you've heard us ask of staff and kind of clear the room if you have anything else to add. Otherwise, we'll, we'll entertain the public comment. Okay. All right, at this time, we'll, well, I guess since they don't have any, do we have any questions of the applicant? They don't have any extra presentation, but I'm gonna go around and ask the applicant. David?
This issue of the second access to 2025 Road. Is your property above the public road or do you have to give an easement through there?
There's an easement right now.
It's, it's right here. Here's, is where this, this road is actually going in on there now. And there's a, there's, there's an easement that allows, actually about down to this fence line, this line right here. So there's a wide easement right here.
So you've already got.
A 2525 Road.
How wide is the easement?
You know.
60.
Is it 60 feet?
I've got it. I've got that. I'd like to see it.
No.
The west, it's a dirt rut, basically, but the easement goes to the west side of that and there's a gate between the two properties.
So it's probably what, 300 feet?
300 feet, 300 feet.
300 feet or something like that. I guess, I don't know. Yeah, I just. I know it's 60 feet north to south and it runs from the end of 2525 Road, which is probably back here. And there's an access even.
And there's a 60-foot easement along that property, just on the south side of the property. There's a 60-foot easement.
TK?
I just wanna be real clear. Mr. Coues, you own the property. Mr. Coues is, you're not the applicant. The applicant is Mr. Simeon?
Yes.
Sorry. Apologies, I put your name. And, and you're just a contract buyer. You're buying the property.
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes.
And you're, you're asking for the subdivision and accepting all the easements that the Coues has had that were existing?
Yes. It's pretty much set up for it. And the access off that 2525 Road.
Right, well. I, I don't remember in the package if we heard from county engineering on access, right? Typically, we would get a comment from county engineering off of the county road 2525.
But it's not a subdivision application yet. We're just rezoning.
Right, so we, we don't rule on the access. Ultimately, county engineering would have to rule on that.
Correct.
Whenever we may approve here, you know, county engineering can overrule. I mean, we can, just because we say, okay, we're, we're allowing this or not allowing this, county engineer is gonna have a final say on all of the access. We don't. That isn't our purview. I wanna make sure you understand that, that that's not being approved. You may have your easements and that's probably something county engineering will wanna know about. And we do too, but we don't, our rulings don't impact, don't cover what county engineering can say.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay.
Arty?
Um, just to catch me up to speed on a split, say they split this ground, can you split another again? Or is that like a split on top of a split?
Yes. There's nothing in the land use code that would prevent subsequent subdivision as long as it's the, the criteria of the land use code.
With the follow-up, that we're hearing from the applicant, which is Mr. Simeon, that he's willing to put it in writing that he would not split. So when we get to that point, it, it may be something we ask that be included in this, in the plat as, as a note. And that would include them doing it again legally, promising they have a right to do it unless they agree not to.
And again, that would be a recommendation of the Board of County Commissioners for their consideration. That's the case.
Because I see what I think says, there's a blue line through the map in Arrow Photo. It says unnamed ditch, I think. It says.
Unnamed ditch. It says unnamed ditch.
It's kind of drainage.
Drainage, drainage, but not.
Zero. Because the other subdivision above it, they went.
Lone pine ditch ends right here. It comes down 2525 Road. When we put in the subdivision for Pine Ridge North, we abandoned the irrigation ditch that came over to this property. So it no longer exists and Lone Pine Ditch comes straight down here. And there is no other irrigation over there.
Can I follow up with that, Steve?
Yes.
So you abandoned the ditch, but did you, you had water rights, right?
We, we abandoned the ditch, yes.
And what did you do with your water rights?
We own water rights, but they're not, well, we own some of Lone Pine and we own some of, some other irrigation companies, but we're, we irrigate our property at the end of 2525, well, here. We have some property here that we irrigate with Brian McPherson, our neighbor to the east.
And are you using the shares that you, that you had from the other unnamed ditch to be able to irrigate what you're doing now? Are they, were they separate?
We had to sell them for water.
Yeah, for water taps.
I see you convert it into residential use. Are you in the Upper Service Creek area? That's what your water is?
Yes.
I see. Okay. Yeah.
So we can, you already have water taps that are applicable to some subdivision of these properties. Is that correct?
Not for the.
Not for the.
That was for the north.
Just for the north? Okay. Well, that certainly be a question when they come back to subdivision.
We have, we have power coming from the north and from the south because our original intention was to subdivide this 31 acres ourselves and put more lots in. And we're, we decided we're just gonna sell, but we already ran power from DMBA. And that's what this is. There's a transformer right here. And there's a transformer and there's water right here. There's a transformer right here and there's a transformer and there's water right here. So the water, the water line ends, I'm not sure Lance where it ends.
It goes right up to the road.
Obviously it comes to you, but um, end of twenty-five, twenty-five road, like I said, is right around here. Somewhere and there's, well, actually the water line runs all the way to Lance's property. So the water line actually comes right here and that's where you would tap in for D, for Upper Surface Creek for domestic water.
So I'm sorry. I ran up things that I had more. So you have a transformer at the end of that little, that little white line is. So it appears to me like the easement you're talking about would have been an easement for DMBA. You created an easement for DMBA's, for their utilities in order to run the transformer in. It's not necessarily an access easement.
That's a separate easement. There's a sixty foot wide access easement that comes off of twenty-five, twenty-five going due west. That's an access easement. Then DMBA has a utility easement that goes up to, up to there.
Separate from the six.
They're, they're two separate things.
Good. Was this some Pine Ridge subdivision, was it all one piece of property before you started and then this thirty-one was left over?
Yes, we bought it from the Isle of Caymire. It was like seventy-six acres and we split that in half.
That's where the water was on there?
Yes.
Yeah, she used the water.
You used the water to make your subdivision and you still have some water, you're saying?
Not irrigation.
Yeah, it's just dried it up.
So the question is for Mr. Simeon, where are you getting water? Domestic? From the Upper Surface Creek. And I spoke with them and they mentioned that they do have taps. But you have to, you have to provide, um, as I understand it, an acre foot of water in order to get a tap. So where are you, where is the wa, acre foot coming for you to get a tap? They don't give you a tap unless you have an acre foot to give to them.
It's, I'm checking, not entirely accurate.
It's not.
We, at least for, for our subdivisions for Pine Ridge North, they allowed us to pay two thousand dollars in lieu of dedicating water.
That, that was in oh eight.
That's not now.
They don't, they don't do that anymore.
Well, it was more recent.
I've, I've been through this with other clients and you go down to the Water Commissioner's office and you say, okay, I want an Upper Surface Creek tap. And they say, okay, here's the people that will sell you the water that you need and, and blood comes. So I mean, it's doable. It's, it's a very doable thing that's being done all the time.
Todd.
Do we have an image of the Delta County master plan that would reflect where this property is located that we can put up on the screen?
Like the.
One on the left.
The big zone.
The, yeah, that would show where it's at. What are we?
Like the Cedar, like the Surface Creek area, so the map.
Yeah.
My zone zoomed out.
I've got a print copy if you want. Yeah.
He's got his mouth.
Yeah, he's the guy.
So take this time to remind folks that we are hearing rezoning, how to subdivisions. Let's try to keep our questions pertinent to the rezone. With that, do we have any other questions for the applicant before we entertain a public comment? Yep.
Chair, I'm just trying to get time for the public comment coming down the pipe here.
Sure.
Because I'm assuming all these people aren't sitting here. So that's why, I know we're not dealing with the subdivision, but it's, has sounded waning on their mind. So I'm trying to figure out the grand scheme of what they're getting at so we can entertain what they're going to tell us.
Thank you.
So can I ask one this, and so if, if, if the rezone gets approved and then they submit a preliminary plat, which is what they would have to do for a sketch plan for the, for the two acre, for the two fifteen acre lots, we won't necessarily see that, will we?
For a two lot subdivision, it is an administrative review. And for three or more, it's a preliminary plat that would come to the planning commission with a recommendation to the board.
Todd, did you have any follow-up to seeing that map?
I just.
Thank you.
Quick question for staff. We're proceeding under the two thousand twenty-one land use code without amendments.
That's correct.
If amendments arise in the interim period between now and a subdivision, there was new amendments that take effect. And I can't remember if there's anything and I don't remember any of that anymore. I'm sure you do, Carl, but there, would there be material impacts of any of those amendments? On these, I know you don't want to talk about the subdivision, but just out of curiosity, on the subdivision of this property?
Depending on the timing of the subdivision. If the subdivision application comes in after the land use code is adopted, it would be subject to rules in place at the time the application submitted. The application is submitted prior to any adoption of any changes, it is still subject to the twenty twenty-one land use code.
But, yeah, but you don't, you can't remember in discussion right now, any particular amendments that are going to impact a subdivision here. I don't particularly.
At this point, not that's been, you know, discussed.
It's taken forever. I can still do this every month.
He got the zone map.
Yeah.
We're okay. Ardy.
On the private road coming down through there, is this thirty-one acres equal parts, parts maintenance on that private road right now? Or is it just binary subdivision and they're just using it? Or are they tied in to some of the maintenance on it?
With the rezone, I've not looked at what the easement says.
Right now.
They have access. They, they have access to the parcel. If they want to subdivide it, then we would need to address as far as accessibility and, and whether subdivision based on how that easement is written.
Now, just wanted to point out at the application.
And you are?
Oh, I'm Cynthia Strezza. I am the, I represent seller.
Your address?
Thirteen eighty-five Southeast.
Sorry, we just need to record, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Yes.
But on the application, it specifically says that, you know, they just want to split the property into parcels. That, you know, two fifteen acre parcels. It was never the buyer's intent to split it any further. And I know that seems to be a concern, but I, but I thought because of, for some reason, you had to do it to change it to whatever zone zoning it is, you could do it in five acre parcels, but that was never your intent. So just to make, you know, to clear that.
And I was no question about water.
Oh, and then the water, yeah, and then as far as the water taps, it'd just be the two water taps.
Okay, at this time, are we ready for public comment? Quick. I will, I'll go through this list. Uh, if your name isn't on this list, I'll do a round at the end and just, you know, see if anyone wants to come up. Again, when I call you, come up to the table, name an address, address us. You'll have three minutes. At the end, we'll have any rebuttal or answers from the, the applicants after that. So we're going to start with Mike Chakalowits.
Thank you. My name is Mike Chikilowits. Uh, my address, my new address is twenty-four eight oh eight Pine Ridge Road. Uh, my property is immediately north of the subject property and I live along Pine Ridge Road. So I'm right at the corner of the boundary and the road. So my immediate concern was what easements do exist and under what conditions? And of course, my concern is that this road is not up to any kind of county standard. It's a very narrow road. Uh, it's not very substantial. And that if we were to envision the future of six more lots using that road, that would be that much more impact, not to mention the construction and everything else. So I guess that's primarily what my concern is. And of course, when you develop parcels, if there are six more parcels, there's a, uh, there are a lot of water taps and utilities being brought in, a lot of impact on the subdivision road. So given that I understand there's a south access that would be necessary for the south portion. But if this subdivision, or if this were divided further, then that would be a much greater impact. Also, traffic conceivably would be greater from Cedar Edge coming through the subdivision as opposed to the south. Very little would be coming through the south to service the other lots in this supposed six acre, six parcel section. That's where my concern is. And since I'm, I've not moved into my new house, I really don't know the neighbors and I don't know exactly what the conditions of this, uh, of this subsequent property division is. So that's why I wanted to express my concerns. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have questions.
Sure.
I mean, is that okay? So if they made a condition that they're not going to subdivide into six lots only two, does that help from some of your concerns?
That's helpful. However, things change. Properties change hands and things can change over time. And we see this all the time.
Sure. So if it gets conditioned, it would be added to the plat.
Yes.
So it'd be recorded. If they had to change it, they'd have to go through another public hearing. In other words, they couldn't, they just couldn't waltz in and say, oh, we decided to change your.
Right, so we'd be doing the same thing we're doing right now. Could, correct?
Yes. It was coming from a.
That's my point.
And the public body would look at it and say, hey, you agreed that you weren't going to do six lots. Why are you changing it? Or, or someone after this person.
Yes.
We had a similar situation in the gravel pit where there was a condition that there'd be no asphalt plant. And again, those applicants came in and said, well, that was twenty years ago. We wanted to do an asphalt plant. And, and the answer was you agreed to no asphalt.
And, and that was relayed onto the subsequent owners, that condition.
It's passed on to every owner along.
I see.
Right. But Tom, I, I just want to make sure we're not promising things that we can't promise in the future. This board is different than it might be in the future and I don't think the applicant has yet agreed to put a plat note on. So I just, we are talking hypotheticals and I just want to make sure that we're not assuring neighbors that this can never happen.
That, that is correct. I mean, first of all, the Board of County Commissioners will be the final decision-making body on this. Secondly, if it's a plat note, a plat can be amended as a replat to remove a plat note, again, administratively. So it, and somebody purchases it later, in fact, we're seeing that a lot where there were plat notes that were done on historical maps saying you can only have one, one unit on the property and they come back and they have, they were able to find water. So they come in and they ask to amend the plat to remove that plat note.
One last comment. I think.
Correct.
Right, so I guess to my point that things change over time and whatever is decided here and whatever conditions are put in place and whatever the engineering department decides to do further on, all of that has to be considered with the eventuality of possibly seeing six lots here. I mean, everything has to rest on that because that's a real possibility that could happen. So I think in all fairness, and as you said, fairness to the property owners of whether you can promise anything or not, uh, as you said, administratively, these things can be changed. So I think it's, it just provokes the, the board here to consider this as a potential six site proposal. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are you against the rezone?
Because I don't know the conditions and because we've suggested these stipulations. Uh, I'm only raising the point that if these stipulations can't be held in concrete, then I guess I'm a little concerned and that this should be decided on, on the basis of six lots, not two. That's my point.
Ardy, did you have anything?
It's more for the applicant, so I don't know if I should do.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
We'll have a one more go-round. Well, that was nice to hear from him, I think, to avoid a lengthy process. I think we'd like to, let's hear from the whole public. Um, we'll invite up Lance Enholm.
My name's Lance Enholm. I live at one five three seven one two five two five road. So my property is directly south of this one and it's the property that contains the easement that twenty-five, twenty-five road ends at. And so access to this south property would come through my property. Does that make sense? And I can show you on the map if necessary. But, uh, so I, I first want to state that I, I don't like being an objection to what people want to do on their property, but I am concerned with this one because of that access. Now, I've had, I had some other notes. Um, I got some questions answered that maybe changed my opinion a little bit. Uh, but I share the same concern that some others have opposed. If it's two lots only, then, then I, I prefer it stays all thirty, but if it's two lots only, I'm not as opposed to that. Uh, but I am concerned that it's going to get subdivided further and there will be more traffic coming through the north part of my property. Uh, twenty-five, twenty-five road ends, the pavement ends right on my property and then it's dirt. So I'm, I, as a new owner over here, I'm unclear. I don't know what is involved in the county engineering building that road out and what, how, what that will impact on my access to my own property and what that will look like. Does that make sense? Um, I did submit a letter to the planning commission. Did you guys get that?
We did.
Okay, I didn't get a copy of it in the packet. That's why I wanted to make sure. So, um, it seems to me from, from what I've heard, I, I prefer that a variance that followed the path of a variance for the property instead of the rezoning to the A five uh, from the standpoint that it sounds, if I'm understanding it right, then uh, there wouldn't be the potential that subdivided again through more properties if, if it's, does that make sense? And I, I just prefer that there's no more traffic on twenty-five, twenty-five road. Uh, and it seemed like a pretty expensive proposition for either the county or the developer to build that road out as well from the, from the bottom side. So, does that make sense?
Thank you.
So again, I, I prefer it stays at thirty acres if it's going to subdivide and there's some way to get conditions. Uh, I don't know how that happens. I'm still unclear on that. They can put conditions on it that it's just two fifteen acre properties and that one home needs to access it from the south via my easement. Uh, I'm sure we could work that out with no problem. If it's going to be three more homes or six more homes, I would be against that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Nick Strezza, do you want to speak anymore?
Yeah. My wife will tell you. Ask me what kind it is, I'll tell you how to build the block. Nick Strezza, thirteen eighty-five Southeast Third Street in Cedar Edge. And I do believe that probably the biggest concern people will have is traffic and how many. And what you do have is someone that wants to purchase the property, who wants to be a good neighbor and has attempted to do everything they could. First of all, they, they did want to go the variance route. I mean, he said, yeah, let's, let's just do that, but that wasn't available. So this was what was available. And we've gone down this road and tried to do it right and tried to be completely upfront and forthright with it. You know, a lot of people here have gray hair. I've got gray hair and a bald head. So we've got a lot of experience and we've seen things change that we don't like. But we all know that things do have to change just so we can be good neighbors. And so our community gets better and grows. And everyone who lives near this property in Pine Ridge or you live around there, something's going to happen on that property. It's either, if it's the way it is now, you're going to have one more person, you know, or one more family or a chicken farm. You know, you're going to have something on it. And I think two homes on it with somebody that wants to do it well, uh, should be, people should be open in their arms and saying, this is a good deal and be happy for it. Uh, the only way, and you, you've addressed it, you can put conditions in the approval. It can be put on the plat. You can put deep restrictions, but again, I got gray hair and a bald head and things do change. But these folks have no intention of doing that. And are, and as we've said, are more than hap, more than happy, but whatever restriction the county wants put in there to make it as clear as possible. And I don't think you can ask for any more than that.
Thank you, Nick. Tom Sane.
Yeah, my name is Tom Sane. I'm at sixteen thousand Pine Ridge Road. And I guess my biggest concern, um, I don't know, there's four or five, maybe five or six people from Pine Ridge North here. And. this is just my opinion, but in all honesty, the road that comes through our subdivision isn't really even quite widthwise adequate for what's there now. And so two more, two more pieces of property. I don't think it's going to make a great deal of difference if it ends up being six, that can make quite, you know, quite a bit of difference. And you know, right now we're going through a lot of the construction. Five or six homes under. And Ardy might be able to answer this as well as anybody, like a truck that you would drive in there, a dump truck and someone trying to get by doesn't. Not going to happen, you know, and like I say, I think that's our biggest concern. That along with it is a private road who Pine Ridge North is responsible for the, because it was not done to county standards. We're responsible for maintaining and paying for what happens to that road. And I guess our concern would be, you know, whatever damage may happen or whatever added congestion may happen. You know, as it stands now, that's kind of on our done. So that, that would be my concern.
Thank you, Tom. Brad Gross.
Brett Rose. I live at twenty four eight oh seven Quail Court in Pine Ridge North. I don't, I don't have, so, so I know Rob fairly well and and have talked to Rob when he's been down looking at the lot. And in general, I don't have any opposition to his desire to put two lots in down there, assuming one would access from the south and one through Pine Ridge. And so I, I don't have any opposition to that. Question, I guess, does, does this board not have the ability to put the variance in place versus, and so a variance just is not an option?
It is with the Board of Adjustment.
Okay.
Different board.
Yeah. Anyway, that's where I'm at. I, I don't. And as already has been stated, you know, the road is fairly narrow and we that are in the finer and subdivision are members of the HOA. We foot the bill for the snow removal, the pavement preservation. Over time, it will all be ours, et cetera, et cetera. So to bear the burden for many more lots down there doesn't seem appropriate to me. But again, I, I don't have any opposition to the two that Rob has suggested he'd like to see down there. So thank you.
That's the end of my list that I have here. Is there anyone that isn't on this list that would like to speak for or against this project?
My name is Cynthia Strezza. Do I need to give you my address again?
Please, would you?
Okay, thirteen eighty five Southeast Third Street in Cedar Edge.
Good. Thank you.
And I'm the seller's agent in this transaction. Basically, the Coues have owned this property for quite some time. And they developed phase one and they developed phase two. And they were going to develop this thirty acres. And basically they're just tired of being involved in the, in developing. So they just wanted to list it. And so we had the buyer that came along and he was very interested and he just, he did a lot of homework before he wrote the offer. And he just wants to split it in the two. Again, he had, he does not have any desire to do the six, but because of the not being able to do the variance and this process we're going through now, you know, we're having to do the six. But I, I do feel strongly that he would put something in writing if that would make everyone feel more comfortable. And I do, I understand. And I think the Coues understand where the neighbors are coming from, you know, with adding six more, six more homes. So they just would like to get an approval and hopefully close on it on Friday on the twenty sixth. That's our plan if everything goes well here. So thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Do we have, let's go around one more time. If we have any last questions of applicants, neighbors, staff. And then we'll, we'll close public comment after that. So.
So I have a question and maybe this goes back to the applicant. It appears when Tom spoke here just a few minutes ago that if it was split into two fifteen acre, his biggest concern with the HOA is that they're responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of that front road. How would the impact of these two, if it was two fifteen acre, who would be responsible or are they included in the maintenance with this other, I believe it was Pine Ridge North? Is that correct? Or thank you. So.
Pine Ridge North will only, it's one lot, not two. I've heard that several times. It'll be just one lot coming through Pine Ridge. The other is coming through twenty five twenty five. I, I understand with the road maintenance and I think there's a way that we can take care of that. With some, some fee as far as selling the, the southern, excuse me, the north side. If we can do something there to add your homeowners association or maintenance of the road. So that might help with some concern there. And also there was general of the twenty twenty five twenty five road. Again, it's, it's going to be just one parcel. And, and I understand your concern there as well. And so we may be able to put something in the, the plat. As you, as you said, to make everybody comfortable.
So the impact or the maintenance on that road could be something that could be addressed is what I'm getting.
Yes.
Thank you.
Ardy?
Couple of questions. Is it, I guess if you're looking for the A five, considering that, you know, you sell this out, go down the road, someone else comes in there. I've, I've, I've said it once and I'll say it again, the split on top of the split thing here in Delta County is I don't like it. I just don't like the way it goes because I don't know, because you can't see the future and you're in your town is one thing and we believe you right now, but your kids buy it, something happens and then next thing you know, there's five or six houses out there, right? So we know you're saying it right now. Is there any way that you can? I see that the property there comes in a twenty twenty five road without using that existing easement through this fellow's property. Is there any way to get access right off twenty twenty five road right onto your property without crossing the hill?
I don't believe so.
It's got a crush.
It got, and if I can't speak really quickly, because I just want to make sure I'm clear. Right? If there's some way to get an assurance that there's only one house coming off of that. And it's not going to get subdivided again like you. I'm completely envious of working with you to work that out. I have no issues with that, you know? If it's going to be six homes driving through there, then that's.
From what I understand, they can't tell you that.
I get that. I'm just saying, I, I want to make sure I'm clear that the one home's not.
You, the two ways you can do it. On the plat, you could just put in there, you know, it won't be subdivided again. That would not have as much teeth as if you requested that they put a deed restriction in the deed that says this property cannot be subdivided. And you know, it, it's a little bit difficult to try and undo a deed restriction. And you know, something along that line, I think would be a mechanism that should give everyone some comfort where, you know, this is it. It's, it's need restricted. And how are you going to get around that?
The only other thing is, is it, because I kind of feel for the Pine Ridge subdivision. Is there any way of abandoning that access and then just coming through the bottom? I was hoping there was a way to get, you know, because that helps everything up there without, that's just something else kicking around. Instead of that lot, because you're buying both, you're buying this whole property. And then if you want to split into six lots, which you could, or you can split into two. You're at least coming through your property and not through Pine Ridge subdivision to do whatever you want or the future wants.
I will definitely not make this gentleman happy.
No, for sure. But I'm just trying to say, I know that road and I know that once you come back in to do that. With today's regulations, it could be very, very I don't know, it could be some news that you don't like, getting that road up to specs on being able to add to it. But I don't know. It's just something else.
Wayne, did you have anything?
No, I'm good.
Thank you. Todd?
I'm good.
David?
So for a rezoning, this discussion about access, is, does that fall under the adequate public facilities are available to serve development in the pro zoning district? Or is this something that should be addressed after zoning if there's a subdivision application?
It's up to your interpretation. I mean, it doesn't specify in the land use code. It just says adequate.
Right. Look at that. I'm thinking maybe some of these issues about plat notes and limiting it to two lots and whether the easement is sufficient would be addressed after a rezon and an application. So the answer is maybe it turned out.
It's really difficult to do this without the subdivision or development plan in front of us. So we.
As soon as certain, you just look at the zoning qualifications and say yea or nay. And then that gets addressed down the road if there, at the next stage.
Well, I don't know what we can have them. I don't know that we can put any conditions.
No.
No.
Three shot. So, you know, and given what could go on with amendments to the land use code. Frankly, it could not just be five or six five acre lots. It could be however many, two and a half acres. Because that's still, I think, a potential amendment. Done with the right wings on it. And our discussion here about not having looted access worries. Given that that looks like Chico brush country, subject to wildfire. And that bothers me from a public safety standpoint. Not having dual access to that all on the southern road and as on your, your other subdivision. If I hear, if I heard Mr.
Excuse us. If you guys need to talk, could you take it outside?
If I remember correctly, there's not going to be a system this planned as that. One lot coming from the south and everything else coming from the north. That bothers me greatly. And I think that's really a natural resource kind of an issue. Given our concerns about wildfire in this country. So I'm just, I guess personally, I'm sorry that we don't have the ability to condition anything here. And that's going to maybe affect my.
TK, do you have any questions?
I do. Mr. Simien, can you go back to the math? I don't know. I haven't known that I've heard how you're going to split this. Are you doing this so that the lots are east, west or north, south?
This is a reason.
That's just right there.
Yeah.
So you're having a north, south?
Yeah.
East, west. The line you're going to split them is basically coming through the middle, running east and west. Okay. So you have a north lot and a south lot. Yes. Okay.
Is the hammerhead turnaround on Pine Ridge's land or is it on this property right here? It's not on your property or is it on Pine Ridge's property? Like if you subdivide this, are they still having the hammerhead turnaround? Without.
It's not a hammerhead.
It's the end of a pavement.
You learned.
The hammerhead is on the south of Pine Ridge. It's, it's, it's.
It's on.
It's south of the property line.
It just lets right to the property.
I just didn't know if it ran.
Okay.
Yeah. I have two questions. One is just a clarification. We have to, you know, in terms of justifying this, whatever we decide that we, we have to find that all those findings are true. And then we have to pick at least one of those determinations to justify it.
Correct.
Um, and then I've heard the applicants talk a couple of times about not being able to do a variance. Is that an issue of the Board of Adjustments not having a time to meet anytime soon? And we've heard about them not being able to reach a forum.
Well, there was that, but we didn't have a full.
Okay.
Full board.
So it is a, that is an alternative strategy if we deny the rezon.
At this point, it is.
Okay. I think that's, well, I have a question now.
Okay. This time we're going to close the public comment. We're going to bring it back to the table and we're going to deliberate. I'm sorry, sir. I think we've heard enough from, from folks, their concerns. Now we'd entertain a motion to approve or deny with said findings. How do we feel? Someone feeling ready for a motion? Do we need to talk about it some more?
So we're not allowed to condition this because it's a reason.
Right.
But are we allowed to, to attach the requirement that if when they go to a subdivision, that it come in front of the planning commission?
Like a recommendation?
Well, that it not be done administratively.
Like that. You could request that. And it's really the director's discretion to refer matter to the planning commission and the board.
Just trying to give some ideas out here. The one, one motion I'm, I'm entertaining and I haven't made yet is to refer this back to the, to the Board of Adjustments. Maintain the eight twenties zone and ask them to go back for variance. The only reason they're here is because we didn't have enough corn in the Board of Adjustments, but we do now. So we wouldn't have to make a decision here. We can make a motion to send it back. They would go get it. They would keep it as a twenty, get a variance for their, for their lot sizes because they're not twenty acres. And then they would just leave it at a twenty that, and they would be only getting a two lot subdivision. It seems to address concerns of the neighbors, of also the neighbors, of other neighbors who have written letters. You got a letter from the other adjacent neighbor. They were all concerned with the density issue here. It seems to be, there were more issues in that other letter about wildlife and preserving ag and everything else. Though this is not irrigated land, so I didn't really love or different in that. But, you know, I read those letters and they seem to address the same thing. I just question whether or not we needed a rezon if there was a possibility for variance. You know, we do want some buffers between A five and A thirty five. And A five would then butt up against A thirty five. Is I'm right here? If you have the area photographs, you have A thirty five.
To the left.
Which priority is so.
And then you would, so the eight twenty is somewhat of a buffer between the existing pine ridge. And I like that.
So Mr. True, it's just kind of to speak to that. First of all, it would not go back to the Board of Adjustment. This would not go to the Board of Adjustment in its current application. The applicant has the right and ability to apply for a rezon or a variance. So if the desire or intent of the planning commission is that you would prefer to see a variance, the applicant would need to amend the application to do that. Otherwise, it's acting on the rezoning and the rezoned recommendation goes to the Board of County Commissioners for their action.
So just to clarify, you're saying the motion would have to be to deny the rezon and recommend then they go reapply? Is that what you're saying? I mean, I'm recommending.
Well, you can't tell the applicant they have to amend their application. They have the opportunity, they have the option of how they want to apply.
Now they do, but they didn't back then because they didn't have an authority, right? Or enough people?
That's correct.
So we could pass on the idea of a rezoning, but the Board of County Commissioners would make the ultimate decision about recommendations, requirements. What would be on the deed, the plat, et cetera.
If you don't like the rezon, you can recommend denial of the rezon. The applicant could then make the decision if they want to amend the application and go the variance route or continue on to the Board of County Commissioners. The County Commissioners will decide on a rezon.
So just so I'm clear, so we've made conditions in prior approvals of applications we've heard that we, that is not possible on a rezon application?
A rezoning application is a legislative action versus the other types of conditional use or, or preliminary plan or discretionary. And that's where the conditions come into play.
Makes sense. Thank you.
I think we heard testimony tonight. I think we heard testimony tonight that is compelling. With respect to Mr. Simone's interest in how to develop that property, that in fact goes against. The rezoning approval standards, specifically resource protection policy to. The exposing additional people or personal property to unmitigated natural hazards. That are present on the subject property, e.g. fire, flood, or geological hazards. By not having a loop system through both subdivisions, the county roads. I think that's a big issue. And that, that clause is not being met, which is a requirement.
Do you, do you have some action in there, or?
They have made a motion.
No, there's no motion.
I mean, I'm, I still, I'm struggling that, I really respect what the neighbors want, and I don't know how to deal with this without denying the rezone. He then has, he has multiple options to go just proceed with, you know, the Board of Commissioners, the County Commissioners, and they can just approve it. Or do, as Carl says, amend it, and, and then go for a variance, now that we have a Board of Adjustments. And that appears that that would codify the two lots, because you get a variance only from those two lots. And then he would proceed with the, the plat, the preliminary plat. We may not see it, but at least it would be two lots, it would be a platted piece, and there'd be a little bit more.
I like a deep restriction, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, but there are a little bit more assurances, because we'd have more written plans. We don't have anything of this, you know, we just found out which way he's gonna divide it. Normally, we get to see at least a sketch plan of what they're doing, get in there. And so I'm just, I'm torn, I want the guy to be able to do what he wants to do, I think three lots is fine, you know, but. We're, we're not able to codify what the neighbors are concerning with what's in front of us, it seems to me. So I want to give the applicant the option to do it, and somehow give the neighbors the ability to know that there's still some respect for their input, sorry.
I'm kind of with you, I'm, I'm with you TK, I think that, I want him to be able to do what he, but on the other hand. The never happen, that's not fair to the neighbors, so, um. And then even, he does buy this place and comes back, what kind of restrictions is he gonna get just to get that split? Right? You don't really know what's gonna get in light, if you go to the variance, maybe it, it's easier route for him. And I think that if we told him, you know, I mean, if we couldn't do it the first time because we were short-staffed. That kind of hurts my heart too, I mean, that kind of falls on us, obviously. So we're here in a tight spot, dealing with two different things, I don't think nobody's really against this whole deal. It's just, we're trying to do it in the wrong form, or whatever you call it, and with too much unknown out there for me.
So I think with. I also have, have some issues with the fact that when they began this process, this was the only avenue available to them. And maybe it would be a different story if, if the Board of Adjustments were available. If we were able to have meetings and have forums, and they chose this route instead, that maybe would be a different circumstance. I think because they chose the one route that really we gave them to pursue at the time they began this. We need to look at whether it meets requirements for rezoning, which Steve, I'm, I'm not saying you don't bring up a good point. And that's something that we need to consider. But outside of that, like, yes, we, we all agree, and possibly the applicant agrees, that it would have been better to go for a variance at the beginning. But that wasn't the option, so I think we need to focus on whether this is meeting the requirements for a rezone. And, and make a motion based on what we're seeing there, as well, as how I feel.
Yeah, thanks, sir, I think you're correct, so.
Well, to make them go back to the drawing board, Kate, you know, when this was the direction that they pursued, because that was the direction that was given to them. I think had they been given a direction of a variance, and that seemed to be a better option, they might have chose going that way. But now we've kind of pigeonholed them into what they need to be doing.
Right, so it seems like the, the only discussion point that's been brought up regarding whether this meets the requirements for a rezone. Is Steve's point about exposing people to property, or people or property to hazards. I don't think you're wrong, Stephen, thinking about those issues, but again, it's a rezone. And some of those issues about a looped, uh, looped access. I would hope will be addressed in the subsequent subdivision portion of their plans. I don't know that specifically rezoning exposes anyone to extra fire hazard.
Steve, I've got a question, so with the information that the order, lot, lot of access through subdivision, the southern lot off twenty-five, twenty-five road. Do you still feel that that poses a fire risk?
Yeah, there is no access from the northern parts of the subdivision to the southern road to twenty-five, twenty-five.
But that's the case right now.
Yeah, that's correct. But we're, we're in the process of the land use consideration. And we have to take these things into consideration, in my judgment, you certainly would be doing that under a subdivision application.
But right now, but if we zone it.
But that's correct, but it, we have this plan, if we rezoned it, he's going to stop the ability. To have that looped system, that traffic flow, and I know you folks don't like the idea of a traffic flow through the whole thing, but I'm talking wildfire. A big deal in Cedar Edge area, I don't know how big that Chico brush is, but it's there, I can see it on an aerial map. And our concern is that we always have access to get out of subdivisions, emergency accesses. And in this case, with the looped road system, so people can get out of there if a fire was coming your way. And, and having that only one lot linked to that southern road, which essentially is shut off at that point from the north. I think is not, but whether we deny or approve this, that will be true, by the way. That's correct right now, that's correct.
Carl, um, like, if we take either one of these routes, like, they go to the variance. What do you think is, would be faster to get them done, a variance, to split this into the fifteens? Or rezone, then come back and split in the fifteens? Time-wise, is this like big difference here, or, because one of them protects Pine Ridge subdivision for future unknowns. And this other one doesn't, basically.
So for the, for the rezone, we take the planning commission's recommendation, and then we move it on to the Board of County Commissioners. So we put a notice, and we, we, we send it on to the Board of County Commissioners, they're the final, final decision makers. With a variance, we put a notice out, and we send it to the Board of Adjustments, they're the final decision makers, unless there's an appeal of that decision. To the Board of County Commissioners.
Then they still gotta split it, either way.
No, the split can happen.
Through the variance.
And, and whether it be the rezone or the variance, the next step would be for the, for the subdivision.
So they gotta come.
So it's kind of six, one and a half dozen.
That's when they still gotta go, and then they gotta come back and split it.
That one, you can do it all at once, right? On variance?
Well, I mean, they, they, if they want to invest in the survey to, prior to the, the variance. They don't have to have a, a survey plaque for the variance, they just, basically it'd be a sketch.
Kate, uh, right now it's zone day twenty, and we're asking to be rezoned. Is that not appropriate to say it's, the pro zoning is not consistent with the master plan? Master plan calls it A-twenty. And, and that's my, that's, I understand staff has said it is consistent. But we have the opportunity to say it's not consistent if we're making a motion, that's sort of where I'm hanging my head on.
Or you can go back on A-thirty-five and say it's consistent with A-five, and then we're, A-thirty-fives are consistent with A-five, so it just moves right on out if we keep going.
Well, I can clarify, can I borrow your master plan here? So this isn't specifically easy to, it's not parcel-based. However, generally, the area for the, all of this is not, is not separated by zoning. There's different designations in the master plan. This property as well as all the property around it, the way I read this map, is intermixed rural communities and agriculture. It's one, one designation in the master plan, not two different designations.
So we have a motion?
I would make a motion to deny. This rezone based on the issues that I raised, that it's inconsistent with the rezoning approval standards. Resource protection. Had it not been for his development plan, I probably would have voted for this. But he's, he's essentially cutting that off. So I would make a motion to deny it based on it not being consistent with approval standards. Specifically mentioned hazards, conditions, and resources, and fire.
There's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I think the only discussion I have is, most time when people get denied, it's, it's like against the applicant. I don't, I don't feel like that's the case here. We're really just saying, everybody wants you to do what you want to do, we just want you to take a different route, or that's what, that's the way I'm reading this. I would agree with that, and it's not to say we're denying you what you want to do, because I think that's end of the coesism, it's the real estate, real estate agents. It may not happen Friday, I apologize, but, um, I think, I think that's the only thing I want to say in this year. I don't know, I mean, we've been doing this a little, a long, long time, you know, three, four, five years, I've never seen this come up. So it's really unusual, it's been difficult, it's difficult, but I second it because I think it's the right thing to do. Because it gives some more assurances to the neighbors of what's gonna happen, we don't have sketch plans, we don't have anything. And I think whatever you do next will involve those, and it will codify really what you've said tonight. You only want to do two lots, you'll talk about, you'll show the access on the north lot through the pine ridge, and then talk to them about joining their maintenance. You'll work it out with Mr. Enholm about the access easement, because I looked on the county map, it shows that you have it as well. I, I think you can do all those things going through the other route, and we wouldn't even have this conversation.
And you're where I have tried, I tried that.
You didn't fail because you failed, you failed because the county didn't have the people involved.
Is there, is there any way, um, with the variance, is there any way that you guys, uh? Can get this, is there any way we can get done fast? This is just taking a long time, I don't know if you guys.
This is government.
That's a staff question.
That is a good question.
Yeah, we have a motion.
There's a motion, a second. Oh, I'm gonna give a counterpoint to address what Steve's talking about with concerns for fire. You know, if we approved to this, and we saw six lots go in, we would see that again at the planning commission. And we would be able to, uh, require engineering come to the table and talk about a road going through. Both ways.
If, if they split it, and then split it, we would never see that here at the planning commission, which I said, more than once.
If they, if they do a two-split, correct?
It's happening right now, and it's something that we looked at, they can split this, come back splitter again, come back splitter again. And it's never gonna see here, and.
But the staff would see it, and the staff seeing it doesn't mean they don't consult any of, any engineering, any fire mitigation. They also have to approve based on standards, uh, the, the same standards that we need to look at.
I think you're right. Point out that our staff has changed more than we have.
Sure, I, I'm just saying, I don't know that that's.
About to change again.
And it's about the people that invest, do they get a chance there on those separate ones, all the splits? They don't get the chance to come in here and say, hey, I build a million dollar house on a street, I'm on this road maintenance.
Well, to your point about splits on splits, again, if we approve a rezone, there's a chance, we get a chance to plan it well. It's my two cents.
I just still struggle with the reason for our denials. Not really changing the reason of the denial, maybe it doesn't change anything, and that's, I just don't.
And remember, the reason there was not a Board of Adjustment in place is we couldn't get anybody to raise their hand to say, I'd like to be on the Board of Adjustment. It had nothing to do with the staff. So I just want to make, that's been said a couple times, it's not on staff.
I, I think when somebody said staff, I think they referred to people on the board.
Right, I just want to make that clarification.
You see the distinction we, sometimes.
Um, I, I agree, I don't, I just don't know that Steve's justification is strong enough. We're, we're voting on a rezone, and the road plan is not included in this rezone. And I think there's an opportunity to. Create mitigation for that fire hazard. And potentially even more so than exists now, if they split and we require a hydrant or require some further mitigation. We actually have more protection than we do now on that property, so I guess I'm having a hard time. Just kind of, when you're looking at this straight up, what is required of us to look at by law, there, I don't, I'm not. I don't feel like Steve's justification is strong enough to deny this application. Sure.
The problem is that if Mr. Simone develops it the way he wants. Even if somebody came back and wanted to do more lots, the southern access would be ended. The way he's talking about developing it. Unless there was some agreement between lot owners, but a through street, through these two lots. And so your, your assertions that some future development or development plan or subdivision plan with more lots. Would address the issue that I brought up, like fire and access, would not be there, would not be in the case.
Oh, wouldn't there be an opportunity to deny that subdivision in the future because it doesn't provide adequate resource protection?
But we're not giving any word about this, we're putting him right back in the same spot he's at right now. Like, if, like, if we do this, he doesn't get what he's wanting to get, he's getting one piece of property. If he comes back and wants to split it and say, oh, the road isn't adequate, here you go, it's the applicant's responsibility to upgrade that road all the way to the highway. That's an injustice, I believe. And I don't think he wants that, maybe the variance way, he gets what he wants, and guarantees we're just talking to parcels. And he can maybe get by that without some major impact.
We also can't guarantee that they'll approve the variance, we have no, no control over, over what happens if he pursues a variance.
Down the road a lot, and they wouldn't necessarily condition them.
That's true.
And, and, I, I'm just, but that, your thing that we could condition it, but we may not see this, to condition that. We may not talk about fire.
My argument is not about any future conditioning or future subdivision, my argument is that, based on what's required of us. To justify our approval or denial, I don't feel strong enough in finding that this exposes people or property to hazards. That don't already exist. And that's the, that is the finding that we're facing this, uh, recommendation on.
Thirty final thoughts, there's a motion on the floor with a second to deny this rezone. Call for a vote, uh, all those in favor of the denial of the rezone, uh, for those reasons, Steve stated, please stay high. One, two, three, those opposed, nay? So that's three yays, five nays.
So motion fails.
Motion fails, um, so now we would need a new motion to approve.
Yes, I'll make the motion to approve, uh, because that's the alternative.
Motion, second, do we need to talk about this anymore?
Yeah, I didn't particularly like Steve's reason, but I don't believe it's consistent with the master plan. And I, I wish that had been part of it, but there wasn't, and that was my reason for voting for the denial. So in that case, I'm gonna vote no on the, on the approval, because I don't believe it's consistent with that. I understand what Carl's saying, but it's left to interpretation. I understand what Carl's saying, but it's left to interpretation, and that's where I think we are, but we'll see where that vote comes out. So I think the motion included that consistent with the master plan, it may have been different.
I think the requirements to rezone have been had. There is southern access and the northern access, Steve's concern was on fire safety could be addressed. Later on, just because the developer now says this is what his plan is. After the rezone and having considered reconsidering, he could do that different, mitigate that, so I think the requirement's good enough.
Any other comment? All those in favor of the motion to approve the rezone, please say aye. All those opposed, say nay. Okay, we're gonna get you on the, on the agenda to see the board of county commissioners, we're just, you know, talking about government. Now you get to go to another board, it will be the final yea, nay. Thank you, everybody, for your time, we're gonna take a five-minute break, we're gonna move into. We have some business at the planning commission to talk about bylaws, so this closes the public hearing for PLN twenty-three zero thirty-six, thank you.
Thank you.
We're missing Steve.
Okay, we're passing it.
Okay.
Thank you, we're turned.
Okay, we're gonna bring you back to the table. We're gonna move on to the bylaws. I have a request from our, our remaining public to speak, and so I'd invite. One or two of the light foots to come to the table.
Just, I, I, I keep. I'll do it, okay. Back you like with nineteen thousand five hundred G Road, Star Nelson Airport still. I'm gonna try this again, I keep trying to think of another way to do this and say this, I wanna start with an apology, then an explanation, and then a question. I wanna apologize for assuming that you guys took an oath to represent us, because I understand now that you didn't. You're here to do what you think is best for Delta County, not for me, not for my neighbor, not for someone else, but for Delta County as a whole. Listening to your bylaw plans, I understand that you don't represent the people, which were your words. You represent Delta County, and I get it. I, I've had an epiphany, I was trying to tell the board last week, we're from two different planets. My planet with planning experience, a lot of things, Richard's experience. When something comes to planning, people look at the entire, I'm gonna say city. And say, you know what, your grocery store is a great idea, but we've got better spots for you, and we've already figured that out. Would you consider this place, this place, or this place, which would be better for you and for the county? I don't see you guys doing that, as an example, the solar farm. This, we came to Carl with options, a different, same footprint, different location, close through a substation. Won't hurt any neighbors and would have saved the DMAA shareholders a little bit of money. But because it's not set up that way here, that can't happen. You can't say to Guzman, well, you know, you got a great idea, but we got a better place for you, because you guys don't do it that way, and now I understand that. But I don't understand why you can't do it that way. Why can you not look at the area as a whole and try to figure the best slots for the best people? You know, so there's no neighbors heard, nothing going on. Now, also from what I've heard you say is, there's a time for public comment, there's a time for the applicants. Time for a discussion, public comment is closed, and then you go on. But several times I've heard you in your meetings make a comment at the end that was not accurate. And we wanna say something, but we can't talk, because you won't let us. I wanna know, who can I talk to? Who does represent me? Where do I go for that? It isn't, it isn't in this room, it's not the board. I don't know where to go, I don't know who to talk to, but I think you guys can do better for Delta. And I think you can do better for the residents, I think we can prosper greatly. If we could include each other more, and I don't know how to do it, I'm just saying, your planet is so different from my planet. And I don't understand, I just don't understand, we're all in the United States, we're all working on the same projects, and. I just can't give up, I just think Delta's better than this. So I guess that's all I wanna say.
Okay, our business tonight is to consider these bylaw changes. We received comment from John Baer eventually. Did, did everyone, were we able to review that?
I just, in all fairness to John, he did respond, I had some questions, and so then by the time he got back to me, and then I got the edits put in. That was today, I do apologize for that.
And it wasn't anything too, you know, we only asked him a couple of things, and I think he, he responded well, he made some edits. At this time, I'd entertain, you know, if, if anyone has any changes, edits, if it's substantive. I'd like to see something writing, you know, at least get it to the staff so we can put it up, so we could all consider it. If it's minor edits, hopefully we can do this on the fly, but I, hopefully we can get through this tonight.
Yeah, so I, I have two things, one of them is in six point one seven discussion, the last paragraph currently states, if a commission member wants. To vote on a pending motion, and I think, I think the right thing is a vote. In other words, we're calling for a vote.
Sorry, can you?
Is that?
Six point one.
One seven.
Other way.
Six point.
Oh, six point seventeen.
Seven, six, ten, seventeen, it's tomatoes and tomatoes.
Six seventeen.
Six seventeen. And the next paragraph down, one more paragraph, there you go, that's, if a commission member wants to vote, and this is about discussion. You're, you're calling for a vote. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Does that make sense, the other money lane?
Oh, instead of two, go to eight.
I would say like two, yeah, wants a vote, or wants to call a vote?
You could, you could clarify it that way, but a vote.
Wants.
We have the provisioned ability in the things to call a vote, but I'm, I'm not going that far, I'm just saying from two to eight, that's pretty minor. And then, is that, in, if you don't want, if anybody objects to speaking, I'm okay with that, I'm not really making a big deal. I'm just trying to do it, and then in six point eight, and it isn't eight, oh, it's six point eight. It says, sorry, I should have gone there.
We were there exactly.
So our quorum of the commission shall be a minimum of five members present at the beginning of the meeting. No public hearing or meetings shall be held unless a quorum is present, is present. I, I think we ought to be able to at least meet, but not take any action. Meaning, if, we don't know if we're gonna have a quorum, if we get people here and we can discuss things, we, you know, this says we can't even meet. But I, I'm just saying we can't take any actions without a quorum, and I'm, you know, I, I hate to lose the ability to sit down, I only get to see you twice a month.
So do you wanna take out a meeting?
No public hearing shall be held unless a quorum is present and remove or meeting.
Wouldn't the information, the conversation that comes from that meeting be absent from? The majority of the commission that would make a decision on that?
Yeah, it wouldn't be relevant, but we could sit and talk about anything, right? I mean, we could be talking about bylaws, it doesn't necessarily mean an application. There are other items, we could be talking about, where do we wanna meet? You know, would we wanna hold a meeting up in Crawford, you know what I mean, there's a lot of other issues other than application issues. And I just hate to miss the opportunity, we only, we have twice a month. If, until we get here, and then we get here, we don't have a quorum, and then we, then everybody would say, you have to leave, that seems crazy.
This would also address if we ever did have a committee meeting. We could, we could have a subcommittee.
Yeah, right, a subcommittee, meeting, can meet, you know, and talk about something, yeah, I agree, so I just, I don't wanna be restricted to not even. That's all I'm saying, to pull out or a meeting in that six day, I didn't have anything else.
I'm fine with that.
And I'm okay, I'm, I was okay with all the comments that John Baer had.
I'm fine with that, we'll be coming out.
He's a better literary man than any, than I am.
I didn't notice any specific comment from John on the question of being able to abstain from a vote.
In the.
He did say.
If you go to seven point one. There's a commentary on the side, it, it's, it's in a separate comment box. Although it should, although it should be rare, I could anticipate some reasons a member may want to need to abstain, even if there is not a technical conflict. Obviously, if this was a regular occurrence, that is unjustifiable, the member could be subject to removal for non-performance of duty. So there, there wasn't any suggested language change.
And I think that's, that seems right, Carl, I mean, it's, you know, we're here to vote, we're here to have input. You know, I mean, it might be a rare instance that we would abstain.
I guess my question is, then, is there a language change we need to make, because at some point it said you must vote yea or nay, which. Procluded the option of a subvention, so do we need to?
Right, yeah, it's in a leader, it's down. When it's in the voting. Wasn't that taken out?
I thought we had.
Yeah, I don't see it.
I thought you had indicated you were just gonna take it out.
I'm not seeing it here. It would be either under the voting for the. Six point seventeen.
No, it says voting members shall respond in affirmative or negative, in matter determined by the period, six point one seventeen, sorry, one seven, seventeen. So we're, we've left it affirmative or negative, and you wanna, you wanna amend that to say, or, or abstain, or abstention. So we change from affirmative, comma, negative, or abstain, or abstentions? I, I guess is what you're trying to incorporate into it, right?
So, or you could just say, voting members shall respond in a matter determined by the chair, consensus, raise your hands. It's trying to get to how you, raising hands, verbal, ballot.
So you're saying remove affirmative or negative, just remove it?
Right.
That, that were required to vote, either the better, okay.
Unless, any, any objections there?
No.
Anything else?
I don't object to it, as long as everybody understands it should be rare.
It, it will be rare.
Should be rare.
And I think there's other provisions that allow for removal if you're, you know, not performing your duty. If you're coming to every meeting and abstaining, there's, there's a place where that can be addressed.
Right.
That would be a cause.
There was some talk about, like, why you're doing it, have you touched on that any?
It came into, that came into the conflict of interest, and, and I don't know that that.
I would like to highlight tonight how you handled that. We had a big discussion, lengthy discussion about when we bring that up. And I have to say, tell you tonight, TK, that I appreciate when you did it right away, you addressed it, that you knew, I mean, that's how I think it should be done. And I think you did a great job with that, and I.
I, I agree with you, which is why I did that.
Well, okay, but I'm just saying, that was a big lengthy discussion last time, it took up a lot of time of, oh, well, what about if I'm three quarters of the way through, then I realize, I know my neighbor's neighbor. Son that just showed up, I mean, I don't wanna, I don't want us to go so far into that meeting that then we say, oh, I have a conflict. Because I think now I've had input.
I knew that guy's daughter.
You know, and I, so I, I was trying to get back to you, I appreciate when you did it as early as you did tonight.
Attorney said that's.
Yeah, I think that's great.
We, we decided to do a nay.
Yeah, so I like.
All right, well, I got a lot of Fs all day long, so I picked the A today. Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, I always, I think those are individual issues, we have conversations here about, oh, if you got a conflict, we're gonna put everybody in the devote. I'm running into that, you make a decision for yourself, if you have a conflict or you don't.
Yeah.
I mean, I called Carl on this beforehand, just to hear, hear it out, if he thought, do I have a conflict? He's the one who sort of counseled me to say, make this, make this, you know, make a statement, and that's how I felt. I got back for another six days before we'll meet again. Sorry.
I don't believe you're the other side of the world, can't help but rub them in.
Every project's gonna be special going forward.
We're gonna have special projects twice a month. We are a special project.
I'm really tired of bylaws.
Great, you gonna make a motion? You gonna make a motion?
Yeah, I would make the motion that with John Baer's recommendations, language changes, that we adopt this version. And.
Motion by Steve.
Did everybody second?
Second by everybody. Todd first.
I liked it, this is such a big deal, like, last time I was like, man, we like have at least the main man members here, all of them. See if they're gonna all light up next time, I don't know.
So we can, when who's here tonight, who can vote? We can actually accept a motion, second, a second motion, and go forward with the bylaws, correct?
Yes.
The existing bylaws, before you change it, doesn't have any specification as far as numbers.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we're doing everything by the book and.
We have a quorum.
Any more discussion about bylaws before we put them to bed?
No, sir.
I'd like to reserve another hour to discuss.
All those in favor of the motion to approve the bylaws as written and amended by John Baer, please say aye. Opposed, nay.
Congratulations.
Okay, we've got a department, we've got a department report from Carl.
I don't have anything specific, but I do wanna note that at this point, we do not have any projects scheduled for the planning commission in June or July.
Nothing is, is ready to come to your, your body yet.
We'll just make a public comment, bring in whoever wants to talk.
So what happens in that situation with the times that we have set, talking about me again?
We can cancel meetings if we want, the question is, do we wanna start entertaining, you know, some of the things that we've had on the back burner? Master plan amendments, at least starting the planning process for listening sessions.
So maybe one of those meetings.
But.
And it's foreseeable that the board might be ready.
I was gonna say, yeah.
Within that time to.
Yeah, I can try to give a quick update on that. The board of county commissioners has completed initial review of chapters one, two, three, four, five, seven, eight. And thirteen, they've just started review of chapter twelve, which is a subdivision. And so on June sixth, in the afternoon, three o'clock, I believe. We'll continue with subdivision's chapter twelve. Then they're gonna go to chapter nine, which is the appeal process, chapter eleven, no conformities, which could all occur on the sixth. After that, all that's left is chapter six, which is about basically subdivision improvement agreements, and then chapter fourteen definitions. So I, I would envision the, the June sixth and at least one more work session for the board to complete their version. Then what I've understood is that they wanna see it all clean, what it looks like, how it reads. For a couple of weeks, to be able to kind of go back through it, see if it reads the way they had intended when they started. Then after that, would be a joint meeting with the planning commission, to have, to have a discussion on that with the board.
So we still have our June fourteenth meeting. So we still have our June fourteenth meeting.
Um, well, there, there's a June fourteen meeting right now. There's a schedule in the land use code.
Because the twenty eighth, obviously, you're pushing it up against your July fourth weekend. So I didn't know that we'd be potentially have a lot on our plate on that. You, the, the June fourteenth meeting will not be a joint meeting. It will get ready that fast. But we would still need a, we would still have a meeting, maybe to do other things. Is that what you're suggesting, Mr. Chair on the fourteenth?
You know, it's at the pleasure of the board. If, you know, we have housing strategy, we have land use code, how much more? Especially once we get the land use code, it's gonna be a lot of reading on our part. Question is, how much do we want to take on? How much do we want to put on staff to take on, you know?
Could we pull out our, I call them daily issues, but those things that we add a list of? Yet to be done, yet to be considered, that were part of our effort on the, on the amendments to the land use code. Could we pull those forward and see if there's any?
Do you like stewardship area?
Right. Then in a meeting that we could maybe lay that out and start discussing. I guess.
I mean, it, I want to be careful. I mean, we'll do what you guys want, but I, you are you. You've got a lot with the land use code coming.
Yeah. Well, one, one of the things that I've always felt we need to do is have some, I know it sounds stupid given everything's going on, some thought about the master plan. And what it is, what it isn't, how, how we even begin to take a look at it. If we wanted to make changes. I mean, we, the changes start with us. That was what we're gonna express. Our talk. So, I mean, simple things like reading the section on future land use. I've just got to echo purposes, flood, or something, whatever it is. There's a, there's a whole chapter on future land use considerations. You know, I would recommend that sometime we take a look at in a preparatory way to come back and look at the master plan. And these kinds of opportunities might be something that we would do. Plus, we keep, we are pulling it out every now and then. It'll give us a chance to sort of review it. And go over it once again and think about it in terms of the land use code. But I think that could be instrumental force.
And normally I would agree with that.
I don't know, just because I brought it up.
No. But I've sat in on all the work sessions and I'm really unclear where our land use code is gonna go. And it could go very different than what we originally, we originally thought. That may impact the master plan. It may impact how that operates and anything else. I guess what I'm saying, I think we need to wait till we get the land use code from the Board of County Commissioners. I'm concerned that technically we only have thirty days. I guess I would love to see us use some of the time between now and when we get the full thing. Is there an opportunity to get some recommendations that haven't been fully approved and vetted that we could talk about? You know, can we take some of the things that they have incorporated in just to a section and say, bring it to one of our meetings in June? You know, that says, hey, this is what's being discussed. Obviously, it could change. I don't know if that's a worth, worthwhile or useless exercise, because they could change it. But, you know, we're gonna be asked to, as I understand it, to approve or not approve their land use code. We're not really gonna have time to go back and make amendments or changes to it. Thirty days is, that's two meetings.
We'll get a chance to recommend amendments, right?
Yes, that the report back can include suggested changes for the board to consider. I think, considering that the board is wanting to have a joint work session, it could also be an opportunity for your funding commission to ask for more than thirty days.
True.
If, if that's what you want to do. I mean, you know, because I mean, we're looking at a maximum of three meetings if they get it done the day before a meeting.
Right.
And then.
Yeah, just, so. I'm not saying what they're doing is not working. Well, I just think it's gonna be, it could be a different approach.
Yeah, they're with the newspaper to complain about us taking too long.
Well, and again, we took a little, almost a full year to do all our revisions. And now we're gonna be asked to do their revisions.
Yeah, so I mean, is it gonna show like what they're changing versus like, or is it like just review the whole harmonica?
It should just be the changes.
Well, we should get a red line, right?
Right, Carl, pull up.
So I've been tracking along the, the initial. I did a red line against the twenty twenty one code. So that's what I am going to, I, I, I've been working on a red line that represents a change of what the board wants from the twenty twenty one code. A lot of it, I will say, a lot of it is what the planning commission, that there are some significant changes also from what the planning commission. And will we be able to tell what our, what our recommendations were?
Compare our red line to their red line essentially?
Yeah, that's a third color, maybe, but I mean, we did, we made recommendations on amendments and it would be interesting.
And the ones that significantly change would be nice to know, too.
Special projects coordinator, those junk.
Well, I do think TK makes a good point of perhaps we do start looking at the chapters they've gone through. See the recommendations we made, talk about the substantive changes they've made.
I can highlight where the main changes are. Some of the minor, you know, individual war changes. I haven't necessarily tracked that.
Okay.
But there's a red line that they haven't authorized to, to share with us. And I, I guess I'm saying, can we share that sooner than later, rather than after they're completely done? Because, like I say, they may take a couple, they may take a couple more meetings and said, oh, put it on the agenda for the next planning commission, have a joint meeting. And we, we're gonna get what? Five days to read? It's just.
The only issue is the version control. And that's, you know, that's why you haven't seen it to date from the commissioners is because once, you know, once it's out for you all, then it becomes the public record and then anyone. And then what if it changes? What if you change it? And we've got red lines on red lines on purple lines on blue lines. And, and we, in this cut and paste world, and, and the assumptions are made that create, you know, the, the misinformation. So that's, that's why you haven't seen it.
I would suggest too, that it comes back to us, you know, piecemeal way. Although, that's a sound recommendation, but it's gonna be confusing to the public.
Well, yeah, Robbie's right. We, we're not getting it because of that reason. It becomes a public document, but it's just gonna be harder for us to absorb it all and, and, and come back with, you know, what we think it is. I like Kate's idea of go compared to what we did. That's a pretty big task, but.
Yeah, and what we could do is, you know, just visit with the board saying, you know, chapter by chapter, perhaps, you know, we can do that and that, you know, but we're trying to be careful that what's out there is doesn't become misinformation. So, exactly.
So with that being said, it sounds like we're, we shouldn't work on the land use code until we have a joint work session with the B O C C.
That would be my recommendation, because at that point, they will, there may, who knows what all they're gonna change between now and then. But after that would be a more solid time to say, here's, here's what the changes were and have that conversation with them. And what is their goal for a joint working meeting? Are, I mean, are they gonna go over their changes in one meeting and tell us?
Probably make Carl go over.
They're gonna tell us the major things that they've changed? What, what, what's it think about the joint meeting? I think the main thing is probably talking about even a higher level. Why they made the changes that they've made, the, the, the intent that they're trying to get to with the land use code. I don't know about getting into specifics. I.
No, it's a higher level. I mean, it'll be the home-based business, you know, the changes they make of that, you know, one of the big things. And one of the, the bigger conversations with you all is gonna be that, that change about site plan review and that process. I mean.
And if you don't know, they took out site time review, so it's either an allowed use or limited use. So they changed the entire table to B, that it's either an allowed, limited, or conditional use. There is no permitted use or site plan review.
It's either you can do it or it comes to this table.
Right.
Kind of like.
I made the distinction of, yeah.
What, what about the ability to subdivide? There was a discussion in one meeting about the ability to subdivide based on water. Is that, is that being incorporated into the land use code?
Well, we haven't gotten into the subdivision based on water, but based on density, discussion of density, which is another area that they had a lot of conversation around. Density and additional units. That as long as you could have water, you could have an additional unit. There was no, no limit.
No limit. So you could put five homes on five acres if you had water.
Correct.
Or you can buy large.
It is subject to a limited use at that point. So it would come through a site five review and go through the, the, the development standards that are in the land use code. But other than that, no. But, but that would not be considered an accessory dwelling unit. That would just be what they could do to use by right. A used by right, allowed use, the first single-family residence in an ADU would have absolutely no review. So if somebody built in the floodplain, we would not be reviewing it. Only when you get to the second unit and beyond, would there be any type of review. So TK's commented, on a twenty acre parcel, with what they're doing now, would, would a property owner be able to develop twenty yards? One per acre? If they had water? Yeah, whether it be A five or A twenty, if, if you had the twenty acres, you had the water, you could basically build the same number of units. It's pretty much changed from what our land use code is supposed.
But we'll, we'll see at the joint work session and if we don't like it, we'll let them know.
That raises, again, property rights. But whose property rights are we trying to protect?
Right.
Development side, the applicant side, or the neighbors? And how's that interplay? That's the conversation with the board in the joint work session.
That's right. We don't quite know what it is.
Right, right. And I bring up these issues because I want to have that conversation.
Okay.
Instead of, okay, here's the, here's their draft.
Got it.
Read it, and then you gotta think, all right, what do we have? And, you know, there are some real structural changes here.
So would we potentially have that TK on the fourteenth? A joint work session? No, we would not. Okay.
So do we want to take a break on the fourteenth? In, in light of having some heavy workload with the land use code?
I'm, I'm okay with that as long as we don't tell Tate.
But we'd be back on the twenty eighth.
We'd have to show up.
And the hope would be that by the twenty eighth, we would have something.
Is that possible, Rob?
I'm not gonna promise.
Yeah.
I didn't say, I don't say it's possible. All right.
Anything's possible.
All right, where are your cows?
Yeah.
And so have you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hey, are there any more? So I think we're gonna, we're gonna take a break the fourteenth. We'll be in conversation with staff and let you know what we have going.
Communication purposes, you're done at the end of May.
Next Wednesday. Six hours, twenty-two, or six days, twenty-two hours.
So how do we communicate in terms of?
Again, I'm not.
Go to you.
It's not going away.
So what, 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 which bar are you picking up to tell me?
So can I take a minute to say, oh, I think our planning commission, myself personally, you know, I'm gonna, I benefit from calls president. I don't know that we'd be here today doing what we've done. You know, I can say thank you. You know, I'm glad you're staying in Delta County. I hope the retirement goes well. I hope pickleball, you win all your tournaments. I hope you get bored in about six months, like pickleball again. I hope, and, and that what you've done for us is invaluable. I, I think we've missed, you know, I think we're missing an opportunity, but I understand what you're doing. And all I can say is, from my personal perspective, this has been fun because of you. So, thanks.
Oh, it's starting to, yeah.
All those in favor?
It wasn't a motion. It was just an answer.
Right, I mean, it, it's out there. It's been posted now for three weeks. It closes the end of this week. We do have two applications.
Really?
That have been submitted. Certainly.
Would you consider? I'd suggest they have to interview with us.
Well, at least.
You want to scare him away?
Some of them, who I've heard applying, maybe yes.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's legitimate for the chairman.
Absolutely.
Planning commission to be involved.
Absolutely. There will be a committee that interviews them. Absolutely.
Hope you can read it.
Well.
So the, I mean, and again, Carl is not going away. He's been reassigned as special projects coordinator. He won't be full-time. People will be the priority. His wife will be the priority. But his expertise is still going to be here for Delta County. We joked about every project going forward will now be labeled special. So we understand. He's, he's got to take care of what he needs to take care of. So we're gonna, we're gonna work.
It's not stepping out of planning, it's stepping back from the day to day.
And we should thank Robbie for allowing that to happen. That's a big deal. Robbie's made that happen. So I, I guess it's the same thing, Rob. Thank you for not letting Oz go over the rainbow, I think.
Okay, with that, we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.